Morning, everyone, and welcome to First County Council this nineteenth day of October. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Everyone could please bow their head for a moment of reflection. And acknowledgement, we acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Ananasa Bay, with a longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse Indigenous, Tius, and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and a continued stewardship of the land on which we live and work. Hey, if you have pecuniary interests, you can disclose that now or as the meeting goes along. Next is confirmation of the agenda, and we do have one item to add, so I'll tell you about that.
Thank you. So through the order under fourteen point one, we will be adding to the closed session a matter pertaining to potential aggregation.
Okay, so we have a motion that October nineteen, twenty twenty-three agenda be approved as demanded. By councillor Agerson, second by councillor Orr, all those in favor. Okay, we have sixteen items on the consent agenda. Is there any item anyone has questions on, or they'd like to call? No? Okay, then we have a motion that council receives a consent agenda items six point one to six. Sorry.
My apologies.
Sorry, that's okay. Councillor Duncan?
Can we remove, uh, your six point three, please?
Point three? Okay, so council receives consent at item six point one to six point sixteen, with the exception of six point three, and approved October fifth, twenty twenty-three, council minutes, moved by Deputy Warden Callum, second by councillor McDermott, all in favor. Hey, councillor Duncan, would you like to speak to?
Yeah, I just wondered if staff could maybe possibly look into this and bring back a report as to whether this is a feasible change in the town of Curstville because of the speeding going through town.
Okay. All right, so would you want to move that?
Yes, I will.
By councillor Duncan, second by councillor Kastner. We've got motion. Okay, all those in favor, staff to look at it, carries. Okay, we do not have any public meetings, hearings, or delegations, so we'll move to our first staff report under economic development and tourism, and it's our tourism strategy and action plan, so. Meredith, please assist me this morning. So Meredith, good morning, welcome.
Morning, my council. Um, so.
Or is yours?
Thank you. So I think what we'll do is we have Urban Metrics here, my staff report, and they are going to present on the strategy. They are the company that we hired to develop our strategy. We have Peter Toma and Nick here from Urban Metrics, if they want to present.
Morning, gentlemen.
Go ahead. Good morning, members of council, your worship. My name is Peter Toma, and I'm joined by my associate Nik Kaskov, he's a project manager, and we are delighted to be here before you to go over the economic development and tourism strategy that we were retained to prepare on behalf of Perth County. Uh, before I go into the presentation, I do want to thank staff, uh, Meredith, uh, actually Maggie and Justin for their support and contribution, uh, helping, uh, uh, really run an excellent business in terms of, uh, doing the economic development strategy. So, uh, I'm going to be very quick through this presentation. You've all had a chance to review the report. The plan, we're going to talk about the connections to, uh, between the plan and the county strategic plan. We're going to look at the anatomy of the plan. We're going to talk about what we heard through the process. We ran a very good process through the past four months or so. Uh, we're going to look at what the priorities were that, in terms of what we heard. Uh, and we're going to look at some of the actions that are, that we're going to move forward with, uh, that were embedded within the plan, and we're happy to answer any questions, uh, afterwards. So really, the purpose of the plan, so Perth County, the, the, the plan is really a way to articulate that Perth County is committed to building and sustaining a high-performing economy and one that capitalizes on the strengths and proactively removes any barriers that are impeding economic, uh, economic growth and really focusing on, you know, on the needs of local businesses, employees, uh, and residents of Perth County. So this plan really provides a playbook, uh, for how the county should, how the county and the economic development and tourism team could build local capacity for success, strengthen the partnerships that exist, uh, and create new partnerships that fill the gaps, um, and, and to help advance ultimately, uh, the, the strategic plan of this council. Um, and so this, this plan that we've developed is really, um, focusing on prosperity, and it really starts with Perth County's vision and Perth County's mission, um, as, as, as the foundations for, for that plan. Um, and so we really use that document, um, as the basis for, uh, for the, for the strategic plan at, at, uh, for the economic development plan and tourism plan. So just want to quickly go over the sort of key roles and responsibilities, uh, that, 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 you know, that Meredith and her team in economic development, you know, have in terms of, you know, what they bring to the table. Um, their, their, uh, their, their roles and responsibilities include supporting the needs and interests of the Perth County business community, and they're to essentially strike the balance, the right balance, that enables both prosperity and sustainability. They're there to connect local businesses with local, regional, provincial, and federal programs that are aimed at, at business growth, entrepreneurship, innovation. They're, they're there to sort of connect, help connect and bridge the, uh, bridge the gaps that exist. They're there to develop partnerships and partnership programs that connect businesses to new markets, to customers and suppliers. They're also fundamentally here to strategically position Perth County as a destination for investment, job creation, innovation, tourism, and travel. And finally, uh, they're here to help remove any barriers that are impacting economic growth, uh, including workforce development, infrastructure, and land and real estate issues that, you know, that, you know, that, that, that pop up what, uh, 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 as, as, as investment comes to town. So the foundations of the economic development plan are really predicated on four things. They're predicated on listening. And so we, 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 you know, we, we, we executed a survey, open to the, open to the community. Um, we, we engaged them on economic development issues. We wanted to know what residents think about economic development. We heard from just under a hundred people, uh, through that survey, which was, which was quite informative. We held two workshops. We, we had, uh, two sessions. We had about forty-three people attend those sessions. They were, they were supported by, uh, by live audience polling. We were able to, you know, really discuss and prioritize some of the things that we were hearing. So it was a way to, to vet some of the things that we've heard. We consulted, we consulted with the, with the folks around this table. We've consulted with senior staff throughout the county, and we've also consulted with, uh, regional partners in economic development. So whether it's, whether it's the regional tourism organization or whether it's SOMA, uh, we, we've connected, we've connected and consulted with uh, other practitioners in economic development that are working on a more regional basis. We also included some benchmarking work, so looking at some comparable communities. How does Perth County measure up against some of the communities that are comparable in size and comparable in, you know, in economic makeup and structure? We looked at municipal best practices, and we also looked at sort of the, the, the growth and market trends, um, which are impacting this particular part of the province and this particular part of, of, uh, uh, you know, the, called the Greater Golden Horseshoe. Uh, and finally, we, we looked at, at planning and resourcing, and we worked very carefully and closely with Meredith and her team in terms of developing a plan that can be properly resourced and that the actions are, you know, that they, they, they're implementable, that they can be, uh, that they can be stewarded through the next three years, uh, comfortably, uh, by her team. And we've identified some key KPIs in terms of how do you, excuse me, how do we evaluate those, uh, those, uh, action items? So really, I mean, but we, we all read the news every day. We see that, we see, we, we, we hear about the pressures of growth and housing and all of these things. Um, and the outlook is, 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 is quite clear. Perth County is situated in the heart of Canada's fastest-growing region. There's just, I mean, you can't escape the geography of it. Um, and, and I think this slide just perfectly explains the pressures that Perth County, you know, has to be ready uh, to manage and address and to cultivate and, and, and steward through. You can see that this, the, 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 the map of Southern Ontario, if you take space, the stretch between Ottawa and Windsor, you can see that Western bias of growth taking place in, in, in the Greater Golden Horseshoe. There's going to be five point six million people added to this, to, to this region. I mean, that's essentially the, that's essentially taking like the whole state of Wisconsin, um, or Colorado, and saying, you know what, everybody's going to clear it and move into, into this particular region in Southern Ontario. And so Perth County is part of, uh, that connection of, you know, the municipalities that are, uh, that are demarcated in blue, where we're going to see growth levels of over percent, and these are the forecasts from the province. Um, and so, you know, we already have twelve point three million people living within, on the doorstep of, uh, uh, of Perth County, and it, it, it is going to grow. Uh, and so making sure that we can grow responsibly, uh, and, you know, manage the resources and the assets, uh, and the, you know, the economic base that this region has relied upon, uh, you want to do that effectively. And this plan essentially works within the reality of the growth pressures that are going to occur. So through those conversations, we identified six economic issues, um, that, that local stakeholders want this county, this council, and the economic development team to proactively address. So these are the, the economic issues, uh, that, that we heard. Um, and these aren't different from, you know, if we were across the street or on the other side of the GTA or whatever. These are the same kind of issues that, that, this is essentially where we're at. Talk about housing, talent, youth retention, transportation, uh, business attraction, um, and, and more flexible land use planning that, uh, will enable things to happen more quickly, whether it's on the housing front or whether it's on getting, you know, commercial and industrial development happening. So basically making, uh, making things happen faster and having a more flexible approach. So from those priorities, we distilled those into, um, we, we really distilled those into, into five directions. Um, and their business retention, expansion, and traction, which is essentially the bread and butter work that Meredith and her team and every other development, economic development practitioner, uh, um, you know, is, is, is focused on first and foremost, it's on destination development and marketing. It's on, uh, people and workforce development. It's on affordable and alternative forms of housing, and it's on mobility, and we're just calling it mobility two point O. So the plan has forty actions. Twenty-six of those are actions that Meredith and her team are already working on and that, that continue, that need to continue to be worked on, like that, that, that's the work in the background. And what we're suggesting is layering in fourteen additional action items. Um, and those action items span across all of the pillars. So on this, this is essentially the same slide, it's in the report. But we're talking about winning and supporting investment. We're talking about amplifying, uh, Perth County and the advantages of Perth County, not as only as a, as a business location, but also as a place to, to recreate and, 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 um, and visit. We're talking about connecting workers with employers. We hear about the gaps that exist, but labor shortages and youth retention, we've got to bring those things together. Talking about ensuring that everybody has a roof over their head. We hear time and time again that, you know, companies are unable to, um, attract workers because the housing's not here, and even if the housing is here, you don't have the transportation thing. So that leads us to the next thing, is that nobody let, gets left behind, that there needs to be, there, there needs to be some sort of commitment ongoing to, uh, transportation, trans, last mile to make things, uh, easier to get around. So under each of these pillars, you can see that there's, there are eleven action items under, under one, twelve, under the second, seven under the third, four under the fourth, and six under the fifth. So the structure of the plan, it's quite straightforward. There are forty actions. We identify whether they're new or carryover. We identify specifically how they align with the county, uh, strategic plan. We talk about the details, uh, of what they are, talk about the outcomes that they're supposed to drive, talk about the partners who are going to be involved in these actions. We talk about the costs in terms of order of magnitude, whether they're just things that will, that will, that will be sustained by the existing operation and the existing capacities of the economic development within their existing envelope, or whether they're going to require something north or south. I think we used fifty thousand dollars as a, as kind of a, as a, as, as between, you know, uh, amid, uh, you know, uh, in terms of the cost. Um, and then finally, we provided, uh, some best practices. So for every action item, we're not suggesting that we're sending them, the sending the team off in a wild goose chase. All of these action items are supported by, I mean, samples that other jurisdictions in the province are doing and doing effectively. So, you know, Meredith and her team are able to call upon their colleagues in economic developments and, hey, you know, tell us what you're doing in this space. So I'm not going to go through all forty action items, because that would, uh, that would be chaos, and you guys have a busy enough agenda. So what I am going to do, and I'm not going to go through the fourteen action items, um, but here is essentially, uh, on this slide are, are the action items, and we've broken them out into short-term. So the things that, that Meredith and her team are going to focus on in the first, in the first twelve months, and then in the next year and the next year. And so we've kind of layered them in. And they're cutting across all of those pillars, so there are new things to be done, um, in year one on those. Um, and, um, uh, I'm not going to go through in each one in, in detail. I'm happy if you have any questions. Uh, but I think I will, uh, I think I will leave it there. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions of the report, councillor McDermott?
I know the, the department does an absolute excellent job, and it's an excellent report. The only thing is when you get to transportation and we get to the housing thing. Unfortunately, our tax base is based on houses and agriculture. We don't have enough industry, so to do an awful lot in both of those two spheres, it's going to be hard to do without, uh, uh, a lot of help from either the province or the federal government. And I know they're excellent at getting, uh, money and stuff like that. It's just, that's going to be, those are going to be the really too hard ones to be able to make much progress on.
Hey, anyone else? No, thank you, gentlemen, for coming and giving us a great oversight of, of this department, and I echo, um, councillor McDermott, this is a great team effort in economic development. They do wonderful things for our, for our community and for Perth County, so.
Yeah, I, I, I'll just echo that. Meredith and her team are tremendous assets for this town.
Okay, there's nothing else. We have a motion that council receives the economic development and tourism strategy and action plan report for information, moved by councillor Smith, second by councillor Trunkowski, all those in favor. Okay, we'll move on, and our next report is the Southwestern Ontario Marketing Alliance update from Soma. And I believe there is that's.
What you introduced. It's Economic Development Day at County Councils. So I have Len Magyard here, uh, with us from, uh, the city of Woodstock. He is the president of the Southwestern Ontario Marketing Alliance, and he's been the president for several years. So Len has a, a presentation just to give an update to county council in regards to activity that, um, uh, our partnership with SOMA has taken on over the last few years.
Morning, your worship and members of council. Thank you for inviting me here this morning to talk about SOMA and some of the things that we do. Uh, so the Southwestern Ontario Marketing Alliance has been around for quite a while now. Uh, it's arguably the longest regional economic development organization in the province of Ontario. So we do have quite a history. Uh, just to refresh, uh, council, uh, in terms of our geographic area, our member communities, obviously, Perth County, Stratford, Woodstock, and your Saltos, St. Thomas, and we partner together to attract foreign direct investment. One of the realities of our business is our editors are much bigger. They have much bigger budgets. They have significantly more staff, and as smaller communities, we're quite often competing for the same investment. So, uh, we work together, cooperate on shows, uh, investment missions, that sort of thing. And it allows us to extend our individual, uh, FDI programs significantly further than we could on our own. The other nice thing is, is that we don't have to be at all the events. So for instance, SOMA is currently at a trade show in Germany right now, and there's, uh, three members from SOMA there. But myself, some of the other communities were allowed to be at home. We share the leads when they, when they, uh, when the show is done. It's what's up to each community to, to do the follow-up. But it's a significant, uh, way I saw it to my council, is it's actually a significant resource saving for, you know, because we don't have to be at all those shows. SOMA this past year, twenty twenty-three, were probably between some of our partnerships between SOMA, OMA, uh, Terra Food Cluster, probably in the neighborhood of ten different trade shows. Uh, and I know each one of the communities typically tries to attend, depending on their area of, of real interest. Um, you know, somewhere between two to three, sometimes many as four, uh, four shows. So, um, it's a significant financial savings being part of SOMA. But as I say, when I talk to my councils, more about the fact we can do way more with a lot less, and we don't have to be out of the office all the time, so. So I think council's aware we're heading to Japan, uh, in November, December of this year. Uh, we typically have been to Japan. Japan's been a key market for us. Uh, we've been to Japan, uh, certainly myself. I've been to Japan probably about eight or nine times. I probably should confirm that, because I know when I meet with some of my Japanese companies, that would be the first thing they ask. Uh, but typically, uh, we, when we go on these missions, we're spending a lot of time promoting our area. Again, one of the difficulties is, is that when we travel internationally, we, we're all very comfortable in knowing what our area is. But when we travel internationally, people don't even necessarily know what Canada is. So we'd have to kind of sell Canada down to Ontario, down to our SOMA region, down to our individual communities. So it becomes quite a challenge, uh, but Canada, obviously, uh, Canada and Japan, relationships very important. Uh, there's a lot of investment, uh, in our area communities. And because we're both, uh, democracies, we have quite a strong connection already. And, uh, many of the, uh, Japanese companies we've dealt with over the years, they have a real affinity for being in Canada. They have a real affinity for Southwest Ontario, and a lot of that is just the work ethic. Uh, what they often tell us is that they like having operations in Canada. Part of that is, is that when they train Canadians on how to do something, it gets done the way that they want it done, uh, to the quality levels they're expecting. Uh, when they train American workers, um, the American workers, for them, uh, do a good job, but after about two weeks, they're trying to change the system. So they like working with Canadians because they have quite, uh, quite good, as I said, good work ethic, but achieves the objectives of the Japanese companies. It's been long. So this, I just want to give, uh, council a little background in terms of, uh, the relationship or the economic data on, uh, Canada, Japan, uh, so you can see the population difference, uh, it's significant. One of the things that always amazes me is that Tokyo has population Canada, uh, in it. Uh, and the other thing that always kind of amazes me is if you look at the land area, there's about two point seven Japans fit into Ontario, and about twenty-seven times that fits into Canada. So it just gives you an idea of, uh, how big Canada is and, and, uh, where, where Japan falls. The other thing that's interesting is, uh, on the GDP. Um, now, these are two thousand seventeen figures, I believe. But, uh, you can see that they do have, uh, they had, uh, six dollars somewhere to, to Canada as well. So, and then you can see, when you go a little bit further, if you go to the next little box there, on energy self-sufficiency, you can see why they're quite interested in Canada and the opportunities that we present in particular in terms of self-sufficiency. And on the food, uh, side, they're very interested in Canadian companies who might have some possibility to export product to Japan as well. Again, just kind of the rough numbers, uh, you're talking billions of dollars, uh, in terms of imports, what Canada imports from Japan and what Ontario imports, uh, and certainly we export a fair amount. But the one that's interesting is, to me, is the Japanese investment. So there's about almost thirty billion dollars investment in, uh, Canada from Japanese-based companies, and the other way is just under five, four point seven. And so lots of opportunities. I know certainly working with the Canadian Embassy and the consulates, we're meeting uh, in a few, uh, few weeks, I guess, just about five weeks from now. Uh, they're, uh, always putting significant emphasis on trying to encourage Canadian companies to do more in Japan. That there are opportunities there. Canada is viewed very highly, uh, in that market for quality. Uh, and there's opportunities there, and they just, they believe that they'd be doing so much more, so. So this, uh, I put this quote in here, uh, this was the former ambassador, Mackenzie Buxton. Basically, what he said is this is a relationship-based, uh, environment in, in Asia and Japan in particular, and you have to, uh, form personal ties, and you have to be there on a regular basis. So again, being smaller communities, that's a little bit difficult. Um, one of my counterparts in Mississauga, I ran into him at an event, uh, in Tokyo a couple of years ago, and that was his seventh visit to, uh, Japan in one year. We're lucky if we can go every two years. So, uh, you know, Mississauga obviously has a lot of investments, uh, but they continue to be there. They want to be top of mind, so. So in terms of our area, you can get an idea of, of some of the Japanese investment that's in our SOMA region. Uh, of course, being from Woodstock, Toyota's near and dear to my heart, and it's created a lot of spin-off, uh, throughout the region. I had it all in, in Woodstock. It's been throughout the whole SOMA region. One of the things that's interesting is with the Japanese companies, with the Kuretsu, the, the Japanese family, um, and family suppliers, they're very interconnected. They also are involved in really busy different investments. So when we're going to Japan, we're not just talking about the existing investments, we're talking about future investments. So if you look at, uh, Mitsui and Toyota, two show in particular, they're part of what they call the Big Five. Uh, Mitsui itself, uh, has a number of operations in Woodstock, actually, three operations, Woodstock now. Uh, and they're involved in everything from banking to finance to real estate, to running convenience stores, to auto parts, to shipping, to everything. So part of our discussion when we're talking to those types of investors is, you know, we, we love the investment you have here. We appreciate your investment. But if you're doing something else, because there's so many different divisions, so that's part of our discussion when we're over there. So when we're doing these various receptions, you have a number of people from those companies. So your objective is obviously to, uh, thank them for the investments that are already here, but to talk about the future and, and try and transfer that along, so. Okay, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that, uh, the council might have.
Okay, questions from members of council? Councillor McDermott?
Oh, you do, uh, unbelievably great work. I just wondered, do you do more than just, uh, Japan and possible maybe Germany?
Uh, yes, uh, that's a terrific question. Um, so SOMA's interested in foreign direct investment from pretty much anywhere. But again, because we're small, we have limited budget. Um, our, our main focuses are, are Japan, Germany for sure. Uh, our SOMA group has actually been very successful uh, in getting, uh, federal dollars to augment our programming over the years. Uh, we probably received someone in it, well, four hundred thousand dollars over the last decade, uh, to get out there and, and visit those markets. So Germany, definitely a big market, US a big market, uh, Japan, Asia, uh, as well. But again, it's very limited, like going to Japan every two years. We go to Germany. Germany is, is more regular. It's, it's on annual basis. It's typically tied to doing trade shows. We have a consultant who actually sets up appointments for us at the trade show. Um, so yeah, definitely Germany's a market. Uh, I was going to mention that we just signed an agreement, uh, with London Economic Development Corporation, where we received significant dollars to go after kind of the Volkswagen value chain in association with the announcement in St. Thomas. Um, we've done some things with London Economic Development Corporation in the past, but this is by far the biggest. So next year, uh, we're still kind of working on what the term will be, but, uh, next year, we'll probably have a couple of specific visits to Germany. Uh, we're hoping that we're going to be an opportunity to host some, uh, suppliers who are coming. Uh suppliers who are coming this way. We do know that Volkswagen is talking to some of their bigger suppliers and encouraging them to be here. So. Of course, we want to be front and center if that opportunity comes. But that's uh, that I think that's a tremendous testament to. Uh Soma being around for so long that we're able to get significant dollars to do that. Uh but really, we're open to any type of investment, but we do have to be pretty targeted. I mean. The reality is doing three markets is probably, probably the max of what we can really, really do.
Okay. Deputy Warden Callum?
Yes, through the one, thank you for your presentation. So when you're away, whether it's Germany or Japan, um. Do your presentation and then he comes forward. How was the selection process within the six municipalities there are part of it? So.
Uh I will say that every kind of selection process is kind of individual. So we have had situations where we've had companies come and visit. So I know we've had a couple of Japanese companies that have come. Uh they're looking for some, not necessarily just the Soma area, they might be looking, they might have a fight, a wider scope of what they're looking for. But quite often, we have the ability to host them. We've done this a couple of times, we've hosted the Alhers because it's kind of. Central to the Soma region in Ingersoll, and we've been able to give them a presentation about what Soma is. Uh you know, the opportunities that are here. In some cases. You know, in some cases, they're building-driven, so they're looking for existing buildings, which. In the Woodstock case, at the moment, we we have nothing in the way of industrial buildings. So. Uh as much as we're interested in them, the reality is we're probably out for some of those investments, so we will. Trying to get, so my motto is Woodstock pays my salary, so Woodstock first. And then if it can't be in Woodstock, anywhere in Soma. Because if it lands in Soma, it benefits all of our, right? People just go back and forth. Supply opportunities are back and forth. You know, trucking opportunities are back and forth. So anything within Soma benefits all of us. Um but there are some communities that rise to the top uh right away. Uh in some cases. You know, they're looking for, say, the Volkswagen example, they're looking for a large site, which, you know, not many of us had the opportunity for that, but uh. Yeah, so each community has the opportunity to present, and then when the company, so what Soma does is we introduce the lead. To the local community and it's up to the local community to pretty much take it from there. I don't know if that entirely answers your question.
If I just want to add to the nice thing about our six municipalities, that if um. Saint Thomas can accommodate, or they get a lead specifically calling Saint Thomas, um. Sean Day, uh the executive director of the Saint Thomas Economic Development Corporation, the first email he sends is to the other five municipalities that are present. Saying bef- before he's sending them to the province, he's sending them to us. Uh and vice versa. If we have a lead that we can't accommodate because we don't have the facility that they need or the land that they want. Um we we share with our five members first and uh they can follow up from there. So it's, yeah, we we. Supporting uh our own first.
There's, there's been a couple recently. Sean has sent some out from Saint Thomas, and I think uh. Heard us tied as the development uh director in Ingersoll, he sent one out as well. Same thing in those cases, looking for space, which. We're all challenged with, but uh anyways, the the opportunity comes to Soma partners first.
Okay, Councilor Casenberg?
But your challenge that uh we face, and I know I sound like a broken record, is the availability of housing in Perth County. Um I will point out that there's a single Japanese business in all of Perth County excluding Stratford and St. Mary's that is in Listowel, Listowel Technology. Which is part of the more group group companies. Um but you know, when we look at that sort of results so far. Um I don't think we've seen, and and I'd like confirmation of this, a whole lot of Japanese interest. Uh in Perth County at at this point. And part of the problem that we will face, uh if there were to be interest, is where are we going to house the workers? And it will continue to distort the market in the area. And I know it sounds sort of um almost blasphemous to say that. Uh we have to be cautious about uh economic growth and attracting new industry and. So forth, but we do have a workforce problem and the workforce problem tends to be in the availability of housing. So I I I express concern. Um I I have no inherent objection. To our participation as a county and and as a government in Soma, and and I think that Soma does a lot of good things. But I think trade missions to Japan where Perth County is represented are part, is probably not in our interest at this point.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Kunkowski?
Um through you, Warden. Uh thanks for the uh. Presentation, um and uh up until now, I hadn't really been familiar with what Soma does, but I'm quite. Pleased to impress with the breadth and depth of the. Uh pursuit of of securing. Um investment for the area. I share counselor Casey Bird's concerns about the housing, but. Um. I think we, it's important that we continue to advertise the region, lobby for the region. Uh yes, we do have our. Uh matters to deal with in terms of housing and labor force and other, other challenges, but that shouldn't uh. That shouldn't uh diminish our appetite for. Uh trying to gain some top mind, top of mind awareness uh in Japan, Germany and United States uh with those markets. I'm sure all the other. Economic areas of the region and the province are having similar challenges, so. Um we just have to find solutions to our own challenges, but in the meantime, put our best foot forward to uh. Lobby on behalf of the region and. Make the best of our opportunities, uh lest they be. Uh lost to other regions. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? No, okay, so we do have a motion that the council receives this Southwestern Ontario Marketing Update Report. By Councilor Peterson, second by Councilor McKenzie, all those in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Before we leave this topic, so in our policy, it states that if I need to attend a out of province. Uh events, I need and we need a motion from council that we approve that. So we might as well do that when we're at this, is come back to it. In a month. So is anyone willing to move that motion? Move by Council McDermott, second by Council Smith, all those in favor? Carried. Okay, thanks, Meredith, and. It was a great report, and yes, it gave us a great insight on. So now we're going to move to Corporate Services and our first item is POA Court Closure Update, and Vicky's with us this morning on the screen. Good morning, Vicky. Good to see you and the floor is yours.
Good morning, Warden Egits and members of council.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay. Good morning, Warden Egits and members of council. This report provides an update on the court closures that have been happening in the Provincial Offenses Court. There is a significant shortage of Justice of the Peace across the province due to a number of retirements, sicknesses and other leaves of absences. On June ninth, twenty twenty-three, the Regional Senior Justice of the Peace Office advised that there will be ongoing shortages. And that the clerk of the court may adjourn proceedings where there is no justice of the of the peace available to attend. The Ministry of the Attorney General is in the process of hiring, but are not able to keep up with the number of vacancies. Due to lack of judicial resources, there have been three last-minute court closures for our Provincial Offenses Court. When there is no justice of the peace available, the only option is an adjournment. On June thirteenth, there were a hundred and twenty-six counts adjourned. On July eleventh, there were a hundred and thirty-seven counts adjourned. On August first, there were ninety-five counts adjourned. All of these cases had to be moved to other court dates, which are already full, which increases staff workload. Staff are finding it extremely difficult to find available time on dockets that are already overbooked. Staff also have to send out notices for every adjourned case, which is time-consuming. Even when a justice of the peace is presiding, all the matters on the overbooked court dockets cannot be reached within the time we are given for court. This results in further adjournments and more overbooked court dockets, and the cycle continues. The cases that could not be dealt with in court on the day that were scheduled increases the pending caseload significantly and impacts on existing backlog. An incident, an incident report for each of the closures was submitted to the Ministry of the Attorney General. Municipal partners are required to file an incident report with the Ministry of the Attorney General to report procedural, ethical or operational issues. Under the Canadian Char- Charter of Rights and Freedoms, a defendant has the right to be tried within a reasonable time. And if these court closures continue to happen, it will have a negative impact on the defendant's right to do so. Failure to be tr- tried within a reasonable time could result in the court dismissing the matter as a result of that delay. Perth County staff have included a draft letter for approval by council. This letter emphasizes the need for more judicial resources to ensure cases move through the court system in a timely manner. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to uh answer any questions anyone has.
Okay, thanks, Vicky. Questions? Counselor Kasonberg?
I don't have questions, but I do have a comment with the letter. Um if you look at the draft of the letter, it begins with Perth County Provincial Off- uh Offenses Court Services wishes to express. Um I think it's the county, council of the county of Perth wishes to express um its concern. Uh in terms of revising, I think that's a lot more compelling, first of all, and I think it's a lot more accurate. In terms of uh what our attention will be with regards to sending this, and I hope it's a lot more impactful. That this county and this council has endorsed this letter and wants actually taken here. Um I I think the story actually has gotten worse. Thank you for the statistics, uh Ms. Hamilton. Uh it feels to me like the story has gotten worse with the actual numbers. We're we're seeing. Quite a few cases adjourned and and kicked down the road, and this continues to be unacceptable, I think, to to me and to the rest of my colleagues around this table.
Okay, anyone else? And I do concur, Todd, with your comments. It is very concerning that this is happening, but. Hopefully it can get resolved. Okay, we have a motion that council receives the POA Court Closure Update Report for information, and that council approves the draft letter to be mailed to the Attorney General and Perth Wellington's. Member of Provincial Parliament expressing Perth County's concerns with recent court closures and limited juris. To the sicko of resources.
As as amended, if I might, Warden Egits, for the sake of changing the letter's introductory.
Okay, yes, through the amended draft letter. Okay, move by Councilor Casenberg, second by. Wow. Councilor Duncan. All those in favor? Carried. Thanks, Vicky.
Thanks, have a good day.
You too. Okay, we're going to move to uh Corporate Services and Annette. Are you doing this?
Uh good morning, everybody. Uh my report is before you. There's two areas that I just want to update. To with um update you on, so I'm not, I don't propose to walk through the report, but rather just touch base on two particular. Uh areas. The first is that I spoke to Community Safety and Wellbeing Council on September twenty-eighth. About school bus arm cameras, emphasizing the need for community involvement and collaboration for school bus safety. The chairs have advised that they are meeting to discuss my presentation and to prepare a response. So to briefly update council on what has happened since. My presentation in June and when I received the direction to present to Community Safety and Wellbeing Council. Um you'll recall that the municipality of North Perth wrote to the Ministry of Transportation. To request that the province require school bus arm cameras to be installed. At the expense of the province and that the province underwrite the cost of AMP's programs in small and rural municipalities. The Ministry of Transportation responded that they are monitoring the federal government requirements as a school bus, as school bus safety is a federal issue. And have suggested that municipalities can save costs by partnering on joint processing centers. So we have been looking at what's happening in the surrounding communities. Um you'll recall that for the county to join. Toronto, their joint processing center, it's fifty-four thousand dollars, a one-time fee plus twenty dollars per ticket. But keep in mind that at present, they do not process school bus arm cameras. Uh we are aware that Waterloo has gone out for an RFP for software related to AMPs. So we are monitoring that to see if that will include setting up a a processing center and whether that will include school bus arm cameras. We do know that AMO is setting up a pilot processing center in Barry, so we are monitoring that. And Newmarket is in the process of setting up its own center as well. Uh the Perth County Warden raised the issue of school bus stop arm cameras. Uh with our MPP Matthew Ray, who advised that the Ministry of Transportation is working with AMO to explore ways that. The administration of school bus arm cameras could be less costly to small and rural municipalities. The Western Ontario Wardens Caucus requested a delegation with the Ministry of Transportation at the AMO Conference in August. To discuss the issue of the province underwriting the cost of AMPs, and unfortunately, that request was denied. Um we were told that there were too many requests for delegations and not um just basically not enough time for the time that was allotted for that delegation to proceed. Also, through the Community Safety and Wellbeing Council, uh here on Perth Student Transportation Services was gathering statistics related to the number of blowbys. So specifically the frequency, time and location. Unfortunately, they have not shared the results with us despite repeated requests. But these statistics would be really helpful because they can help inform activities going forward. So for instance, if there's one area that is experiencing. Blowbys more frequently, perhaps there's other alternative ways that they could be addressed, such as, you know, an increased police prevent, prevent. Increased police presence, moving the bus stop, additional signage. Um and finally, Community Safety and Wellbeing Council has brought forward a media campaign for this week. This week is School Bus Safety Week. Um and additionally, the county, they supported the media campaign, but they also posted notices. On social media at the beginning of the school year to remind people to stop for school buses and to be on the alert. Um the second update that I wanted to provide you with is just with regards to the RFP for insurance. Um so the RFP went out on September twenty-seventh. With a deadline for uh a deadline to respond of November tenth. At present, we currently have seven plan takers. Um. The approximate cost for insurance coverage for twenty twenty-three is five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So this is a significant contract for the county. And I think that it's proven that the county consider bringing an expert on board to help us assess the responses to our RFP. We want to ensure that we're getting the best possible coverage for the county to protect the county, and we want someone who is independent to provide us with an opinion. Middlesex County recommended uh an insurance specialist, Dave Rickley of Programmed Insurance Brokers. So I have reached out to Mr. Rickley, who has confirmed that he can work within our timeframe to build a comparison template and charts. Um basically to protect us, to provide us with an expert opinion. His fee is eighty-three hundred dollars, so this is a low value purchase, under ten thousand dollars. And it does fall within the exceptions in our procurement bylaw for professional and special services under council-approved programs. Subject to any questions, that is my report. You'll see the remainder of updates on our various programs within that report.
Okay, questions of the report? Counselor Kunkowski?
Um thank you, um through you, Warden. Um I just, Annette, could you kind of back up into the AMP's part? There's. Think I caught it all here, but I just wanted to be sure. So there was the software system that you were monitoring?
So Waterloo has gone out for an RFP for a software uh system to support their program.
Okay.
What is not clear is whether that software system will actually support a processing center. Or whether they will need to rely on Toronto's processing center. Or potentially the one to be established in Barry, or even Newmarket wants that set up.
Okay, so it was the software and then it was the processing centers that you're keeping an eye on, and then. You made the comments about the. The Western Wardens Caucus being denied at AMO with their. Delegation and and the rest of the matters were being dealt with under the Community um Safety and Wellbeing Committee.
But we're waiting for a response from the Community Safety and Wellbeing Council.
Okay, no, I just trying to make notes as fast as you were recording, so it's good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Casenberg?
Uh I I'm not sure if the, if the police representation. See. We've been um raised this issue with you, but uh we understand from. Information presented at the North Perth Police Services Board that these can act on um our. Um uh with testimonial evidence from the driver and from. Uh uh camera that doesn't have to meet the requirements that. About period, or at least that's the, we have understanding that. And it's, I'm wondering if that was raised as an alternative to.
You must, so I'm wondering if that was raised as an alternative to. That's a sort of full integration with AMP. Raise that at that meeting.
So through the Warden, that issue was not raised, but you are absolutely correct. So if that's say a school bus chose to put a dash cam in. That picture from the dash cam combined with the testimony of the driver. It, it's a piece of evidence. For school bus arm cameras, if they meet the evidentiary requirements, that, that picture is the only evidence that is required.
Okay, councillor McDermott?
I know when I was driving school bus, um. It was pretty well almost impossible because you were to have a description of the driver, description of the vehicle and a license plate number. And to get all of that down when somebody's zipping by was pretty well almost impossible.
Councillor McKenzie?
Yeah, two, um, I guess two comments as much as anything. One is more of a question, I guess. Um, and I believe it's just. Curd this past year that the buses have been equipped with the dual action lights. They go round with first or orange. And then they go right there. Does that have any impact on, on the low buys? I wonder if they're less now than what they used to be? Because you got a little bit of warning before the lights start flashing. Just, just a question.
I, I'm not really sure. I know in Gat Hill, they had problems last year, cars going by and they still do.
Okay, yeah, well, I, I, it does give you a little bit of. The, um, the other, uh, comment that I have being that, um. Um, the Western Wardens, where I'm able to make a delegation at A M O. As you probably should be working right now for Roma, whether it's Western Wardens or whether it's Perth County makes a. A delegation to the Ministry of Transportation, probably would be a good time now to, to get on it because we're only. Few months away from, from that conference to see if you can get in.
Well, that was one of my questions, or we can approach uh, M P P Matthew Ray and. We don't have to wait for Roma. We could get him to set up meeting up. For us and we could go meet with the Ministry of Transportation. He's done that before for us, so. Deputy Warden Callum?
Yes, through the Warden. Thank you for your report and that. Just like to speak with regards to the evaluation from uh, Mr. Dave. I believe the specialist, I believe that eighty-three hundred dollars is a small price uh, to pay to get the, you know, any valuation from him. With his expertise, we are not expert in that field and. Whether it's, I don't know, premiums or whatever, he will, will kind of say that way. So I think it's, it's uh. Eighty-three hundred dollars moving forward. Thanks.
Okay, councillor Kastenberg?
Thanks, I, I agree with the, if you were to call him on that one, certainly, um. Uh, last question pertains to the uh, notion that uh, the province is suggesting this is a federal matter in some ways. You comment on your understanding of, of that one, like in terms of jurisdiction around school buses. School bus equipment, I mean, it certainly seems to be that education is a provincial matter which they fiercely protect. From federal government interference and yet there's some notion that school buses are the responsibility of the federal government?
So through the Warden, the legislation is a little bit messy, in fact. So the province. Sets the regulations with respect to what constitutes a safe school bus. So what equipment should be installed on the school bus? Is set by the, is sorry, is set by, i- is a federal regulation. The province then um, enforces those regulations to say that school bus is or is not safe, does not meet the safety. Um, requirements and then it's the police officers who enforce the charges. So there's a little bit of a trickle-down effect, but it's certainly not very clear. So in the response from um. The M P P, they basically said, well, school bus safety is a federal. Issue because they set the standards for what should be on the school bus and then it's up to the province to enforce those standards.
Supplementary, uh, but is it not within the purview of the province to add on? If you will, to the, the safety suite that is available on a school bus in addition to what the feds say?
Through the Warden, absolutely. You are correct. Certainly the province could do that and they themselves could regulate that school buses in Ontario. Need to have school bus armed cameras.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? See none. We have a motion that council receives a corporate services September twenty twenty-three update report for information. With by councillor Agerson, second by councillor Kastenberg, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Uh, we're going to move to paramedic services and we have an update and joining us this morning, so. Free Mike, welcome and the floor is yours.
Thanks, that's through the Warden. The um. So this is a, just an operational update. I have um. Both of the deputies providing an annual update uh, in this council season. So this was Deputy Chief Mike Crowley's um, report and of course, as just fate has it, he's not able to be here today. So I'm providing the update. Um. This is part of keeping council informed, but also actively taking action towards session planning and those types of things are important. So just a couple of highlights. That, for the report that I have, this, this is just an informational update, um. But a couple of things that you might be interested in, so our, um. Today, uh, they're driving, but the rest of this week, we've had uh, twenty new recruits in this room as part of um. Our in paramedic families, we were very successful. Um, and uh, really pleased and proud of our staff for, for, I think we're really excited to welcome. To uh, our service. Um. Uh, one of the other things um, that we had been looking at is the ministry has created a dashboard, um. So we have invested in that catalog that we've been talking about a lot over the last couple of years and that still exists. But we have also an independent dashboard now for the province that, um, if it works, that they'll be paying for. Um, and that might come at a cost savings of eight to ten thousand dollars a year for us. So we're going to continue to look. To see if we can work with the province to get that operational and if it's adequate, then uh, we would transition to that. Um, that just gives supervisors a real time view of what's happening in the um. In the county at any given time. We do have a product that's in place right now. It's just that if we can replace that product with this, then that would be a bit of a savings to us. Um, uh, we've been going through a privacy impact assessment. So we've been talking about First Watch. Which is a business analytic tool that Medeville Health Services has purchased since part of the. Um, uh, package that uh, uh, each of the counties that work with them would have available to them and. Um, so I think that uh, this is, uh. It, it's a good move, um, and we are going through with I T privacy impact assessment, which is relatively, uh. You know, we've been under a lot of scrutiny for this one program, which is new to the county and uh, this process and. Um, we're looking forward towards uh, getting that approved in the near future and then we will be able to onboard it. Um, a couple of other uh, small things are, um, back to the catalog. We've been noticing that. Um, the uh, vendor that we have uh, providing. The technology, the hardware in ambulances is dropping the signal. So we're looking at. Either working with them to fix the issue or to um, select another vendor to make sure that we're not dropping signals. Um, and then uh, that is pretty much it. Everything else is in there. Um, and if you have any questions, I'll hand the microphone back over to the Warden.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Any questions of the report? See no questions. We have a motion that council receives a paramedic services update operations report for information. With by Deputy Warden Callum, second by councillor Kastenberg, all in favor. Carried. Thank you. Okay, do we have any council reports? Bylaws. Any notice of motions? Other business? Announcements. No, we do have a need for a closed session and Claire, I believe, has a motion to. Into close, so I'll let him read that.
Perfect. So through the order, the council moving to close session at approximately nine fifty-nine A M in accordance with section two thirty-nine of the municipal act. S O two thousand and one, C twenty-five, as amended to consider matter pertaining to potential litigation.
And you have a mover and a seconder, moved by councillor McDermott, second by councillor Agerson, all in favor? Carried. Okay, that bylaw three nine four six twenty twenty-three being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation, the county at Perth. At its regular meeting held October nineteen, twenty twenty-three is read a first, second, third time. And finally passed October nineteen, twenty twenty-three, even by councillor Agerson, second by councillor McDermott, all in favor. Carried and the last motion of the morning is that we adjourn at ten eighteen. Moved by councillor Orr, second by councillor Kastenberg, all in favor? Carried. Thanks, everyone.